All right, Facebook's giving me a hard time right now, so I'm gonna share it on the high school page. I'm gonna share it on my page and share it to the high school page. It's not letting me share the page I manage.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know why it's giving me a hard time. It usually doesn't do this.
God bless you. If it did it for you, you would have done it for the rest of us. Oh, my word.
Just see if I can get it to go now. Sorry about the pause, a delay.
Don't be sorry. We're glad you're doing it.
Thanks, Kathy.
Oh, my gosh.
So, Mr. Higgins, it's crashing, going live. I'm not sure why. I don't know if you guys want to start with the special workshop and I will still work on it? Or you just want to wait? We still have it being recorded, but it's not on the Facebook page yet.
Well, Mrs. Thomas, what are your thoughts on that? Should we give it maybe five minutes to see if we can get it up and running?
I think that's a good idea.
Did you hear that, April?
Yep, I'm working on it still.
Thank you, we know you are.
Okay, I think I'm there.
Okay.
It's all set, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you.
Just, it's a little bit different, but it's there.
Yeah, okay, thank you. The school board workshop is intended for discussion purposes only. No board action will be taken. Public participation, public comments will be made through the question and answer through Zoom or by sending an email to Ellsworth School Board Vice Chair Paula Marcosian at pmarcosian@ellsworthschools.org. Those submitting questions are asked to provide their full name. Item A on our agenda, review of the
One minute.
FY19
Excuse me.
Audit.
I did not, we, that would take, to say that we're not going to take anonymous questions would require a discussion and a board vote.
Oh, dear. I can think of very few times where people will respond to anonymous questions or anonymous comments.
Maybe if that's your choice, you are welcome to not or do, but I'm going to respond to anonymous questions.
Mrs. Thomas, may I address the chair? So, I'd like anyone listening to this, Mrs. Miller, let you know that we have a policy, BEDH, public participation at school board meetings. And there are a bunch of guidelines there. One of them is, let me just find it. D, during this time set aside for public participation, the chair will be responsible for recognizing all speakers who must identify themselves as they begin talking. So, Mrs. Miller, this is from our own policy. You can find it on the website of our school department.
Except that sometimes these parents are asking questions that prepaying to their child's education in a way that then crosses a line to say, I have to identify my child maybe as special needs that the rest of the world does not know about nor needs to know about.
That's, this isn't the form for that anyways, Abby. That's not, that is not, that is not the intent of this meeting tonight.
It's, if people want to come in with anonymous questions and it has to do with their child's education, yeah, and they have good reason to be anonymous. And whether it be a part of this tonight's meeting or the next night's meeting, no, I'm not, you know, I'm not in agreement with that. I'm not going to force somebody to out their child because you guys want to only take questions that are anonymous.
If we were at a regular school board meeting in city hall chambers or in the workshop and someone wanted to get up and speak, they would be identified, they would have to identify themselves. This just happens to be a different venue for this meeting due to the pandemic.
It sure does, and it certainly has created a different set of circumstances and issues for parents because of it.
Then again, this would be identified directly.
Mrs. Thomas, with questions with regard to a student's specific program or specific needs, if they identify them as 504 or IDEA, those are not questions appropriate for a public meeting. Those questions should be posed either to the child's teacher, the child's principal, and if there's no resolution at those levels, to the special education director. And our teachers, principals, and special education directors stand well ready to respond to those questions and to help our parents. They've been doing that throughout this pandemic and actually prior to that.
And it has been my communication with parents that they have followed those change of commands and it has still not been met. So, the best place would be the school board meeting.
Before this meeting, we're going to ask that people submit their questions with their full name. Thank you.
And I'm going to answer them whether they're, if, whether they're or not. Because we haven't had, we have not had a public discussion and a public vote on that.
For the record, the board's policy states that public participants, public comments shall be identified. The board must go by that policy.
And it is just how you have had many, many leeways in the whole COVID-19 crisis thing. If a parent has had no satisfaction getting their questions answered and coming forward means having to out their child, then no, that alone creates
If they do not get they can contact me and I will work with those directors to support them in getting help for the parents. That's how the process works. We're not going to talk about
Because they've gone through that process and they're still contacting us.
Mrs. Thomas, may I weigh in?
Yes.
So, I have the policy on public participation, which I mentioned. It also says all questions should be addressed to the chair. That's also part of our policy in for Elsworth School Department. These policies were drafted by the policy committee, reviewed by the policy committee after two or three years. They've all been approved by the board in a public vote. I would suggest that if parents or anybody is not getting satisfaction they need by bringing it to the attention of the teacher, and if that doesn't work, going to the administrator or special ed director or some, someone who supervises the teacher. If that doesn't provide satisfaction, they go to the superintendent and if that doesn't give them what they need, they can go to the board. But I would suggest, instead of going to the board at a public meeting, send an email to the entire board. We, there's things that we can't discuss in public meetings that are confidential. And I agree with you, Mrs. Miller, that parents, there might be a situation where a parent doesn't want to identify himself or herself, but that, there's other recourses that they can follow to get their their concerns addressed by the board instead of doing it at a public meeting. And again, we can't change our policy on the fly. Our policy is, public participation at school board meetings requires that, among other things, that speakers who want to address the chair must be recognized by the chair and then they must identify themselves. So, we can't change that.
Once again, I have requested on several occasions for the policy committee to convene to discuss how these changes in this particular situation affect all kinds of things in our school. And once again, this should have been previously identified as a problem, previously discussed. And once again, now we're in a meeting where we're about to expect public participation this evening. And it, you know, you want to enforce a policy when you have denied the policy committee to meet, to discuss any changes. You, you know, it can't be both ways.
The first thing we're going to discuss is the FY19 audit. And we have a guest here, the auditor, Ms. Connors, I believe.
Yes.
Yes. So, Mr. Higgins, could you do introductions and take care of this, please?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Yes, this evening, what we have is auditor from our school department and city's auditor, Jen Connors. She's provided a presentation which was forwarded to board members and she'll provide an overview of that presentation. Also present tonight is our business manager, Carolyn Heller. So, Mrs. Connors, welcome. We appreciate having you here this evening and we would turn the floor over to you.
All right, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I'm gonna try sharing my screen, so bear with me for a moment. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so we put together a set of graphs here that's kind of an overview of the audit. And I would like to say if any of the board members have any questions or comments at any time, please feel free to jump in. I may not notice if you're trying to flag my attention. I would like to thank Carolyn and the school department staff. As usual, they made this another well-thought-out and organized audit. We show up every year and they have all the files ready to go and they're very accommodating when it comes to getting information for us if they don't have it all ready. So, if you, I'm gonna go to the second slide here. This is an overview of the results of the audit. So, for the financial statement audit itself, the city and the school department both received unmodified opinions. So, that means that your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Besides the audit of the financial statements, we also are required to do additional testing under government auditing standards. Under those standards, we are required to test internal controls as they relate to financial reporting. And under that, under those standards, we did issue a separate report in which we've included recommendations on improving internal controls. So, we'll get into that a little bit later. In addition, because the city receives and spends over $750,000 in federal grants, it is required to undergo what's called a single audit under the uniform guidance. And what that means is we are required to come in and test some of the city's and the school department's largest federal programs. And in 2019, we tested the Child Nutrition Cluster, which is also known as the School Lunch Program, the Title 1A Grant, which is also a school program, and the Highway Planning and Construction Cluster, which is a railroad grant received on the city side. And under the single audit testing, there were no findings, no material weaknesses, and no significant deficiencies. So, clean opinion across the board. Now, I'm gonna jump into some of the slides that focus on the financial statements themselves. So, on the third graph here, we have an overview of the school department's fund balance. This is just the general fund, fund balance, and this is shown over the last five fiscal years. You can see that the fund balance is broken down into various categories. So, that first category is non-spendable, and that is what it sounds like. It's a portion of your fund balance that you can't spend because it basically has already been spent. The $3,600 for 2019 is made up of some prepaid expenditures that the school department had. The next level is restricted, and those are amounts that have been set aside for specific purposes. They're usually restricted by outside sources such as a federal granting agency or the state. This particular balance in 2019 represented the CTE balance, which is now restricted specifically for that purpose. So, it's broken out here from the other parts of the fund balance. The assigned fund balance, that's an amount that is internally designated. And that actually represents the amount that is budgeted to be used in the next fiscal year. And then finally, what you have left is the unassigned fund balance. That's the amount of fund balance that's left over after you break fund balance out into all of those other categories. So, you can see the total fund balance for 2019 did increase. It went up from 1.7 million to approximately almost 2 million. That was an increase of $283,000. And now, the next couple of graphs, we'll get into why fund balance went up. This next graph is an overview of the school department revenues, budget to actual. So, looking at some of the larger variances here, you can see that other intergovernmental revenues were higher than budgeted and that had to do with the fact that there were higher reimbursements for state agency clients than originally anticipated. Tuition revenues were actually under budget by about $115,000 and that had to do with when the budget was passed, the amount that was budgeted per student was higher than the final amount that was actually charged for tuition. Other charges for services were higher than budgeted and that had to do with higher-than-anticipated CTE enrollment. So, that's enrollment in the HCTC school. And overall, you can see that total revenues exceeded the budget by just over $9,000, which actually represents 0.01% of the budget. So, it was really close. This next graph is school department expenditures, again, budget-to-actual variances. So, looking at some of the larger variances here, you can see that regular instruction, special education instruction, career and technical education, and student-staff support were all lower than budgeted. That had to do with some positions that were unfilled. There were some positions that were filled, people left, and then the new people that were hired were hired at lower rates than originally anticipated. As well as there were some variance in health insurance enrollment. The final enrollment was different than what was originally anticipated. So, the school department may have budgeted for a family plan and then somebody actually joined a single-member plan. Other instruction expenditures were lower than budgeted as the purchase of athletic equipment was delayed and there were fewer students that needed after-school or vacation school than originally anticipated. And then, facility maintenance was $153,000, $154,000 under budget and that had to do with some savings related to efficient lighting that was installed, more efficient custodial services, as well as some budgeted maintenance projects that were delayed. And overall, total expenditures were under budgeted by about $1.2 million. This next graph focuses just on the school department's unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. We look at that measurement to kind of gauge where the school department's unassigned fund balance is to get an idea of basically how healthy the unassigned fund balance is. As of 2019, the school department had an unassigned fund balance of 4.6%. So, you can see that it has increased over the past four fiscal years. The main Department of Education does currently allow a carryover of 3% of unassigned fund balance. And then, if you do exceed that 3%, then the state says you are required to make plans to use that fund balance. Now, my understanding is the school department did actually consult with the main Department of Education and that they said that they were in compliance because as of right now, the school department has budgeted to use $955,000 of its fund balance in the 2020 budget. This next graph here is an overview of the school department's expenditures as a pie chart. So, each portion of the pie is a percentage of that category as a percentage of total expenditures. Most of these categories stay relatively the same. A couple of categories that increased a little bit. Facilities and maintenance went up 1% compared to last year and student and staff support went up 1%. Whereas debt service and regular instruction both decreased by about 1%. And you'll notice that transfers out is 0%, 0%. That's not because you didn't have any transfers out, it's just they were less than 1%. So, that's expressed as zero. And then, on the next graph, I have the 2018 category, so you can see the two and compare the two. And that was it for the graphs. Are there any questions? Oops, sorry, I'm sorry, I have one more. This graph that we have here, these are the school department expenditures as a percentage of total expenditures as compared to other communities. Now, what we did was we picked some communities that are relatively similar in size to Ellsworth as well as the enrollment for free and reduced is about the same to give you an idea of how the Ellsworth School Department compares to some of these communities. And you can see that the two that jump out to me would be regular instruction, which tends to be lower. CTE or career and technical education is higher. And then, debt service would be the other area that tends to be a little bit higher. So, we have those four communities and then you can see at the very end of that, we have the statewide numbers. Okay, that is my final graph. Are there any questions about any of those numbers?
Is our debt services, is that mostly our school lunch program?
That would be actual principal and interest payments that you make on outstanding bonds.
Okay.
So, those would be school construction bonds.
Okay, good to know.
Okay. The next part that I have here, I'm actually gonna stop sharing my screen. Okay. We had some comments and some recommendations, as I mentioned. And I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at those. I wasn't going to put them on the screen. So, what I can do is kind of just go over what we had for comments and recommendations, if that's okay with you. Okay. So, the first comment that we had was actually a significant deficiency and it had to do with material audit adjustments and audit cutoff. So, there were two issues that we had. The first issue was that we had to propose a significant number of adjusting journal entries as part of the audit. I will say that most of those entries were on the city side. For the school department side, we, I believe we had about six adjusting entries, which is fairly normal. The city side, we did have over 30, so that is a little on the higher end. The other issue that we had had to do with audit cutoff, we received the trial balance, again, on the city side. And they had continued to post adjusting journal entries after we had received the trial balance, which caused a significant amount of work on our end because the numbers kept changing. So... We also had a significant deficiency that had to do with preparation of financial statements. And that has to do with the fact that the city relies on us as auditors to prepare the financial statements. When that happens, then the city is required to oversee our services as well as take responsibility for those financial statements. Currently, the city does lack somebody that has the training to prepare those financial statements. Our recommendation is that the finance department staff get a little more Our recommendation is that the finance department staff get a little more training in that area so they can take better responsibility for those financial statements. We had a comment related to segregation of duties, and this would apply both to city and the school department. For those of you who are not familiar with the concept of segregation of duties, that is when you take a process and you have different employees performing parts of that process. The example that I usually use is when you're handling cash. So if you have one person who has custody of cash, you typically don't want the same person doing the bank reconciliation, preparing the deposit, adjusting, doing the adjusting journal entries for cash. Ideally, you like to see separate individuals performing those procedures. Now, I have to say that the school department central office actually has really good segregation of duties. However, there are some areas where there is a lack of segregation of duties. For example, at the school departments, I'm sorry, at the individual schools where they have the activity funds, you typically have one person that is taking in the money and writing the checks and doing the bank reconciliation. So we just like to point out that ideal segregation of duties is not possible, but it is a risk, and therefore the risk does still exist. The next comment that we had had to do with city and school reconciliations. So currently, the city has a pooled cash account that includes both the city's and the school department's fund. The city has to prepare adjusting journal entries to account for the transactions that flow through that cash account. At the same time, the school department, which has a separate accounting function, also has to post adjusting journal entries to record all the transactions that flow through that cash account. So basically, what's happening is you have a doubling up of the accounting function for one set of transactions. We did make a recommendation that the city might consider creating a separate bank account for the school department. What would happen is that all of the school department's transactions would flow through that bank account, and the school department would be responsible for processing its own accounts payable, its own payroll, and recording all of its transactions. And the city, it would basically do transfers to the school department for its local allocation. And then it would record an expenditure, but then the rest of the school department's transactions would basically come off of the city's books. So you would eliminate the extra work that is required in reconciling the school and the city's numbers. I'm going to skip over a couple of these because they really have to do with the city side of things. Let's see. The next comment we had had to do with the high school activity fund. So those are the amounts that are held at the high school on behalf of student groups. And as part of our audit, we selected 40 dispersments from the activity fund to test. And of those 40 dispersments, four had sales tax that actually exceeded $10 per transaction. And in total, they exceeded $88. Of those four transactions, three were also reimbursements to individuals. So the school department does actually have a policy that prohibits the reimbursement of sales tax and encourages avoiding paying sales tax, since the school department is a tax-exempt entity. So our recommendation was that the high school review these transactions and make sure that none of the reimbursements are including sales tax, as well as high school staff should try to avoid paying sales tax when possible. We also tested some cash receipts at the high school. We selected 39 receipts to review from May 2019. And of those receipts, we identified 10 that were not deposited in a timely manner. So eight of those were deposited two to three weeks after the amounts were received. The school department does have an activity fund policy that states that all amounts that are received by the school should be deposited within three business days. So we recommended that the school review its process for its deposits and make sure that it's meeting that policy and depositing those amounts in a timely manner. Excuse me. We also tested the HCTC activity fund. And we selected 31 dispersments to test. And of those dispersments, two were missing supporting documentation, besides a copy of the check that was issued. We would normally look for a vendor invoice or a receipt or something that shows that supports that type of dispersment. One of the checks also was made out to cash for meals for a school trip, which is understandable that a check would be issued to cash, but we would anticipate to see some of the receipts for those meals, and we didn't see any of that documentation. So our recommendation was that the school just ensure that supporting documentations are turned in, including receipts and invoices, and that all required approvals are obtained before checks are issued. We also had a comment related to school payroll procedures. We did notice that the school department does pay some of its ed tech wages and some cellphone reimbursements based on prior practice. So there's no actual documentation of a policy or authorization. The risk there is that you could potentially have an employee that questions that they're being paid the right amount. So our recommendation was that these types of amounts should be formally documented and authorized, whether it's in a policy or some form that's signed by the superintendent. And that is pretty much what we have. So if anyone has any questions or anything they'd like to discuss?
Jen, can you clarify? I'm sorry, because it's a little bit back, but when you were talking about the finance department for the city, I believe you said the city, but the persons maybe that needed more training, was that at the city level or the school department? Wanted to make sure.
That was at the city level.
At the city level, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Question. When you're talking about the time lapse in depositing checks, were we just talking maybe a couple of days lapsed over the time normally allowed in?
No, some of them were as much as two to three weeks after they were received. They are supposed to be deposited within the same week that they're received. Usually, we give them a little bit of leeway. We'll look and say maybe up to 10 days because sometimes someone is out for vacation, or there was a holiday or weekend. But anything over that, then that's not really considered timely.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure. Any further questions?
Is it possible for us to, I didn't have that in our packet, Jen, so is it possible to have that sent with all of those recommendations?
Yes, yeah. I thought we had sent copies of those, but it's possible they went directly to the city instead of the school department. Is it something you can answer, Carolyn?
We do have it. I'm not sure if that was distributed to the school board as of yet or not.
Yeah, I just have the PowerPoint, which is great, but I just figured just to reiterate and go back over, that would be good.
Absolutely, yes. We distribute those annually to the board members, so that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
You should have a copy.
Thanks.
I would like to say also, sorry, I was just going to say, if someone does think of a question after the fact, they're always welcome to either go through Carolyn or contact me directly. I know sometimes after the fact, you think of something that you wish you had asked about at the time, so.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, if I may, I just want to acknowledge the great work that both Kathy Halloran and Monica Seast do. Without their hard work and dedication, we wouldn't get the good results that we get each year.
Very true.
And if I could just add to that, Carolyn is being modest. Certainly Kathy and Monica do deserve praise for the great work that they do. And I didn't think Carolyn would mention herself, but Carolyn oversees all of that process and does an excellent job as well. So she deserves praise as well for the books coming out as well as they do.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Totally agree. Okay, if you don't need me for anything else, I will step out of the meeting.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a report of the Maine School Board Association webinar meetings. I had an opportunity to do a couple of Zoom meetings. One with Maine School Board Association Regional Meeting on May 14th. I believe Rob and Paul were negotiating that evening, and the other two members were busy. So we thought maybe that this was a good opportunity to catch everyone up on what was said at that particular meeting. And these regional meetings are basically Hancock and Washington County. This particular meeting had a couple of other Southern Maine board members attend. So it was a really good discussion. I learned a lot. I, you know, I'm one of those lifelong learners. And I didn't realize the difference between a town meeting and a municipality meeting. And we were talking about budgets, and at a town meeting, they cannot do paper votes. It has to be in person. So their budgets are going to be held up, or they'll be using last year's budget until the pandemic is over and they can get together as a town meeting. As opposed to our municipality, which because we go through the city council and they vote for it, and we can do, our election will be either done with paper and pencil, either in person or as an absentee vote. So that was a new piece of learning for me, and I was quite excited to know the difference between the two. Living very close to Trenton, I couldn't figure out how they did things differently than we did. Had quite a discussion about remote and distance learning issues in Hancock and Washington County. Some of the things that were brought up were that, at the very beginning, students were very, very interested in doing the distance learning. And as time goes on, they were losing interest in some of their lessons or not showing up online. And so it was nice to hear that, you know, this is happening all over the state. They also talked about the equality with computers and some districts. Some students have dial-up and some have high-speed internet. Some are still waiting for hotspots. This is an issue all over the state, which was nice to hear. It wasn't just Ellsworth's problem, it was all over. The lady from Pittsfield was saying that that was an issue in her area also. And the other piece that they brought up was that teachers' computer skills, their computer knowledge and skills in some areas is lacking in trying to do online lessons. And I thought that was a good point, so. They talked about how different school units were considering planning for next year after the state gives its guidance. And some were planning to do some initial planning this spring. Some were going to do in-service during the summer. And one school in Southern Maine was talking about holding off at the beginning of the year and not starting school until mid-September to give the teachers in-service at the beginning of the year on how to start the year off using remote learning. They also talked about it maybe a hybrid of some students coming some days and some students being online. And all of that is, you know, just basically talk. Nothing is etched in stone yet. You know, everyone's waiting for guidance from Augusta. And a couple of the people were talking, they said, we hope that that comes across as a mandate, not a recommendation. Because they want everyone to be in the same boat, I guess. And then, of course, there was a discussion of right now, at this point, how different things are in Washington County as opposed to York County or Cumberland County. Again, going back to my new learning, I learned about a consent agenda, which was interesting. A lot of different school boards, you can block things together and only vote once on it, like your minutes, your administrative reports. We don't vote on our administrative reports to accept them, but in some school departments, they do. Your superintendent's report, all that can be blocked under one and do a uniform. One motion, one vote, we accept it all. I didn't really see a place for us to use it. So, but I did learn about it, so. There was a big discussion on social media and a couple of pamphlets that came, a couple of papers that came, documentation on using social media and how even though you don't feel that what you're writing is public, anything you write is public and can be used, no matter what the, on any page that you're documenting. It can be, if they're doing an investigation, they can dig up any comment that you've made. What else? Okay. We did discuss roll call voting, and I'm happy to report that we are okay. There were some school systems that are going to have to go back and re-vote everything that they've done because they didn't do roll call voting. So I was quite relieved when we were all done to think that we didn't have to go back and vote for everything we voted for for the last three months. And the last thing is the Fall Conference, which is usually the last weekend in October. They haven't decided whether it's going to be virtual or not, nor have they decided whether it's going to be Thursday and Friday or Friday and Saturday. So that was one of the pieces that I went to. The other one had to do with special ed. And that was really interesting because I think it was more, even though it was open to school board chairs, a lot of it was directed to special ed staff and special ed teachers. And so I learned quite a bit there, and they talked about that ESY could be virtual this year. And that people, the mental health of the teachers were discussed, as well as the students. And that everyone needs to make a good faith effort toward the needs of the students and the parents, but really not blame themselves for the things that they want to be doing that they can't do. And not to rely on their memory, document, 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 because eventually that's going to come back up when you're trying to do your data collection. If you've got it written down right then, you've got it. And talked about the the ESY program can be done in groups or individually. And just, you know, basically, nothing. There was a roundtable discussion. Wanted to know who was granting CEUs for teachers' work at the end of the year. And I think that's something that we discuss, or Rachel discussed at the workshops at the end of the year. And then the big question was, how engaged are our seniors at this point? So I learned a lot. I'm always learning something new. It's really quite interesting. So that's the brief take on what I did for two evenings.
Mrs. Thomas, one question. How many attendees did you have from Hancock and Washington County?
Oh, there are quite a few. A lot of, a lot A lot of, a lot of, I, I can't tell you exactly how many because there were people there from the State Department. There were also people there from Southern Maine that couldn't make their own regional meetings. But it's always interesting, you know, when they talk about what are you going to do for high school graduation? And they have 10 students and they have 12 students. And it's like, okay, we have 24 students. Then they get to me and I said, we have 126. So very different situation, you know, all the way around. When you, when you talk to these, a lot of the people from down east, it's a, it's very different than what we're seeing here in Ellsworth. So. But I enjoy those meetings because it's really interesting to hear what other people are doing and what they're seeing. And you can learn a lot. And that's it for my report.
Mrs. Thomas, if I may comment, I think it's great that Steve Bailey from the Maine School Management Association and also Skip Greenlaw, who's been involved with education and other things. He's, he was a, he's from Dear Isle Stonington and he's a school board member there. He also served in the legislature for many years. He's very knowledgeable about school issues and very passionate about it. And he, and, and Steve, I think it was Skip's initiative, but Steve's, with Steve's assistance, they put together these workshops. And I, I think it's great and I think we should give a shout out to those two gentlemen for helping to facilitate these meetings.
A follow-up on that, Mr. Mark Oshin, that, you know, this is something that the School Boards Association has been trying to expand in their repertoire of offerings. But geographically, it's kind of a challenge. I think many of us are getting to the point where the phrase zoomed out is starting to become applicable. But I think that's been one of the positive developments of this is schools association may have found a mechanism whereby they can really increase their membership at these types of opportunities. And every time I know that one of our members attends one of their offerings, you know, you come back with a lot of good information, a lot of good learning to share with your fellow board members. So Brenda, you didn't say it, but I, I think you probably would close by saying that you would encourage all of our members to attend these whenever possible.
I do. Okay, item C, review of D O E guidelines, guidance for summer programming.
Okay, I'd like to start this conversation now. Members of the board, we did receive from the Department of Education, and I'll read the title. Guidance for Summer Programming: Safety Guidelines for School Administrative Units Choosing to Operate In-Person Summer Programs. We received that May eighteenth, sent it to you on the nineteenth and said, we're going to, we're going to talk about it a little bit. But just a couple of things that I'd like to put out there for everybody. One is in speaking with the Commissioner of Education, these are guidelines put out for districts that are choosing to operate in-person summer programs. It is not an endorsement from the Department of Ed that you operate an in-person summer program. But because they are doing the right thing, they're providing information for local districts to consider in making an informed decision that's in the best interest of their students and their staff and their communities. So just a couple of things to let you as a board know. Since receiving this guidance, I've been involved in a couple of different meetings. One with the Hancock County Superintendent's, where we reviewed the data top to bottom. I had a lot of conversations on just what in this guidance is feasible to have in place over the next 10 to 12 to 14 days so that you couldn't put, can put on a quality E S Y and Title I A program. Hancock County Districts and Hancock County Superintendent throughout this entire COVID process, and actually longer than that, if you go back to the development of C T E calendars and high school calendars, have always been a very cooperative and collaborative group. Even though we recognize that each of our districts have unique socioeconomic demographic characteristics, we try to work together as a group so that we can make decisions that are as consistent as possible. Again, I'll use the C T E piece as an example. All of our districts send students to H C T C, so it behooves us to have school calendars for our high schools that are as close as possible so that programming is facilitated for those students. And if one school has an activity or an in-service day, we try to make it so that all schools do. So students aren't missing programs. We try to do that with other initiatives as well, and we've tried to do that through the COVID piece. We've also talked at length about, not just for summer. And, you know, Brenda, you mentioned the fall, what's the fall going to look like? And yes, you're right, we don't. But talking about what do we need to do, be as consistent as possible in the fall, again, for the same types of reasons. But that was one lengthy meeting that we talked about and I can tell you, not to speak publicly for other districts, but many other districts in Hancock County have already made the decision that their remote program, excuse me, programming for the summer is going to continue the remote basis. And frankly, we've all been looking at it through that lens prior to receiving this guidance. But in Ellsworth, our decision was we need to go through it and take a look at it line to line. So that was the first meeting. Second meeting is last Friday, I met with our leadership team. And just so people understand what our district's leadership team includes, it's all of our building principals, all of our directors, you know, building principals at E H S, E E M S, where there are two administrative, excuse me, assistant principals, director of H C T C, director of adult education, also includes transportation director, facilities and maintenance director, special education director and assistant director, curriculum coordinator and food service director. So we're encompassing all of our departments in looking at this data. So in going through that, the question we looked at is, and I just want to say philosophically, and I think we would all share this. I think everybody in our communities, in our schools, if given the choice, all things considered equal, we would much rather be back in school as we were back in February. All of our students there, all of our staff there, just as we are. Obviously, we're not at that point right now, but we would prefer to have that for the summer and we all definitely want to see that in September. So with that being said, just a couple of things to let you know what we did. If you look at that guidance that's laid out by the Department of Ed, there are a number of things that we were asked to look for and put in place in determining whether or not we could offer our programming. And again, what we're talking about for programming is extended school year, which would include our student population who has I E Ps or five oh four plans that have summer programming in them and our students who qualify for Title I A programming and services. It also extends to what we do with our school facilities. But in terms of those two programs on the academic side, E S Y, no, I digress. We're also looking at this summer, two other components that we need to be aware of. Both at H C T C and in our adult ed program, we had students who have not yet completed their programs for the year. And again, that's no different from any of our students who are going to be doing remote learning through June fifth. But when you look at the C N A programs, the C R M A programs and the adult ed program and H C T C, those students, students need to pass a certification exam. So that, that's a component we have to be aware of. Also at H C T C, in those programs that we have for those students, historically, there has been a certification exam at the end of the year for each of those programs, for certifications for students to complete their programs. That's another component that we have to deal with that not all other schools in Hancock County have to deal with. One thing that I have asked Director Sargent and Director Bowles to do in anticipation of this information here is please look, look to the people that they work with who oversee these exams and find out what our options are. Are there any of these that can be conducted virtually? In the event that we make the decision that we're going to do our programs virtually over the summer? Or are there any of them with which we have no choice in? And again, when you look at E S Y or Title I A, that's programming over the summer to maintain services, to keep students up to speed, to prepare them for the next year. What we're talking about with these two programs is the completion of the program this year. So I just want to make that distinction. But looking down through the documentation, we're talking about additional staffing recommendations. And I'm going right down, starting in section A. What the Department of Ed is recommending is a school nurse or other staff person trained by the school nurse. And some of the questions that we ask, you know, our school nurses do not work during the summer. Here's one question, what type of training needs to be provided and what is the liability? There's, there's been no guidance on that. Talks about a school social worker or counselor. It doesn't talk about whether they're onsite or available through remote learning. That's another consideration. But we're also looking at, over the summer, we've had a custodial maintenance staff in our buildings who have been able to clean and disinfect the areas in which we've had teachers come in or in which we're doing our food service program. They've been able to take up with that. But when you start about bringing additional students and staff into the building, there's an increase in the scope of cleaning and disinfecting with C D C protocols. You know, the other piece that we need to look at is, you know, and Mrs. Thomas, you mentioned this about Washington County. There was a comment made that Washington County is a lot different than Cumberland County. That is true. I just want to make a general statement that was made by one of my colleagues in a meeting last Friday. Yes, in Washington County, it is drastically different when you look at the number of reported cases and that's what we're going by. But the super, one of the superintendent's tenants down there mentioned that over the past week, many, many more people are coming to Washington County. And what you have for a population for most of the year changes when you get to the summer months. So they're factoring that into their conversations down there. But when you look at that, we still have staff who are in high risk categories, who are not able to come in, or they're taking care of a parent who's in a high risk category. We need to be concerned with that while we're looking at summer programming. Another section, and again, a lot of this information comes from our conversation with our leadership team. Preparation of students, family and staff pre-entry. You know, we have a really good system in place with regard to whether or not staff members are allowed to come into our buildings over the period of time since March. It's a very clear cut piece. If you, if you don't feel well or if you have symptoms, you're not to come in. If you're in a risk category, we're not going to require you to come in. We'll try to find and work with you to find other ways that you can contribute and do your work. And Brenda, you mentioned Rachel. Rachel's done a great job working to provide some P D opportunities for those staff. We're also talking about, have you been exposed to someone who's moved here from out of state? Or have you come back from out of state? Do you need to quarantine over the past 14 days? We've got that under control really well for our staff in the summer. That's a process that's going to need to be implemented for any students and any additional staff that we have in. And some of the staff members who would provide services in our summer programs, many of them have been working remotely. So there is definitely going to be a comfort level piece of whether staff is willing to come in, especially if we have the opportunity to do our programming remotely. When you're looking at instructional spaces, you're looking at what kinds of priorities that you need to have with instructional spaces. You have to prioritize classrooms and spaces with exterior doors or instructional spaces with built-in bathrooms. We have that in some of our schools. We don't have that in some of our schools. Or classrooms or instructional spaces that are closest to bathrooms. Ventilation in our classrooms, additional fans and so forth. Decluttering classrooms and instructional spaces to remove pillows, couches, sofa type chairs, toys, rugs and other items that would be difficult to wipe down and disinfect. Plan for spaces for no more than 10 students in a classroom instructional space and fewer if classroom space will not allow six foot distance between students and desks. Again, you do talk about some staffing considerations there. I'm going to skip over transportation at this point in time, but transportation also presents some challenges. I will come back to that. In term of classroom instructional space and procedures, we're talking about setting up structures by which we stagger entry times to avoid hallway crowding, ensure students, students being minimal belongings from home. Where we hang coats, six foot spacing during entry of the building, six foot spacing during the day at the building. Protocols for going to the restroom, hence the recommendation you have a restroom within the classroom. Prohibiting family members and visitors from entering the building, which we already have in place. Having staff and students wash and sanitize their hands prior to entering the classroom. Development plans for late arrivals to call the front office or arrangements can be made. Those types of requirements are expected to continue throughout the day. So there's a lot of additional cleaning and disinfecting that is going to need to take place. In terms of exiting, it's washing, sanitizing hands prior to exiting in classroom instruction and staggering dismissals to avoid hallway crowding. There are also hygiene pieces that we're asked to have in place, which is cleaning tabletops, door handles and other surfaces that are frequently touched prior to students entering during breaks or recess times and after students leave. So you're looking at staffing and materials and supplies to be able to fulfill those responsibilities. Okay, now some of the questions that we talked about around the table of our leadership are, will that require additional staffing? With regard to cleaning and disinfecting, Chuck Turnbull and his staff have done a great job putting into place measures. We're looking at what other measures need to be put in place in response to this guidance. Lunch and snack procedure, again, a lot of the same considerations. Where are students going to eat? They should bring their own water bottles. And washing and sanitizing before and after eating snack or lunch. Disposal of food and other materials. Bin should be collected by assigned staff and cleaned per guidelines. And again, custodian teacher, ed tech. One of the questions that came up about this is will the additional requirements that we have with regard to those types of activities take away time from the students in our program? Would we be able to spend more quality time with students through a remote program than we would by implementing all of these different guidelines? You know, and again, we're not even talking about whether or not anybody may or may not be exposed to a virus. One of the other places is outdoor play. It says playground equipment should remain off limits. So we talked about a number of things, especially when you're talking about some of our younger kids. One of the things about the playground is you can make the equipment off limits. It's a challenge to keep kids who haven't been on a playground off the equipment when they're out there for a 15 or 20 minute time period. But when you look at a playground, it's a fenced in gated area. That's another way to ensure additional supervision for students. If we're not going to have kids in there because it would be difficult to keep them off the equipment, what other locations do we have for our students? Is the track an option? Again, that presents some challenges. In terms of an illness policy, we would need to have something in place like we do during the regular school day, where if we have a student who shows up and has a temperature of 100 or higher, they should not come to school. If they're already there, should go home and need to have place, plans in place to make sure parents can come back and do that. Symptoms that are suggestive of illness requiring students to stay at the stay home at their school, they need to go home immediately. Again, we're talking having a nurse or somebody who's trained for that. And one of the other pieces that is a significant challenge is the materials and supplies that we would need in order to run a program in the summer. Cleaning supplies per C D C guidelines. And we're talking with Mr. Turnbull, he has been able to get materials to do with the cleaning that our custodians are doing over the course of the summer. And again, please know that's without any students in the building. But we're also looking at other types of equipment that we will need to get. Not just cloth coverings or masks, but other face coverings or shields in some cases, gloves, gowns, soap, paper towels and so forth. We certainly are trying to make sure that we have a supply of those things. But if you've heard the stories from around the state and Mrs. Thomas, maybe they talked about this in one of the meetings that you were in. That's a challenge that many of us are viewing as moving forward, particularly for the fall. Everyone is looking for that type of equipment. It's not always readily available. So there are a lot of challenges there into putting together a program whereby we can abide by all these guidelines over the next 15 days or so to have an E S Y and one A program in place. Now I've run through that very quickly. The one other piece that I do want to touch on is transportation. One of the pieces of transportation that states, their first piece under transportation, the safest mode of transportation is for students to be transported via private vehicle. You know, and it doesn't say if they're talking about parents transporting the children back and forth or if we're talking about the school vans that we have, we do have school vans. But then you get to some of the other challenges that you have. If it's school-based transportation, like see glass dividers or face shields for our drivers. Sanitizer requiring students to sanitize hands prior to entering a bus. Requiring students to fill the seats at the back of the bus first and to fill seats going forward. One student per seat, or if it's siblings who live together at home, they should sit together. So the question that jumped out ass immediately was, if you're alternating seats, does this meet the six foot standard? You know, maintaining a six foot distance. You're also talking about disinfecting buses. That's, that's another challenge that we have. So I've run through that all very quickly. I know you folks have had a copy of it. But I would welcome, welcome any comments, any questions and any concerns that members may have. And again, please know, our, our, our staff really did a great job going through this and asking a lot of questions. So I would entertain any comments, questions, thoughts?
Mrs. Thomas, may I, may I make a comment? Just on the transportation piece and safety, you mentioned the safest method of transportation is private vehicles. But as a, as a bicycle pedestrian advocate, long time, I'd like to also suggest that perhaps the safest form and also the one that provides opportunities for help the exercise is walking and cycling to school for those students are able to do that. and cycling to school for those students who are able to do that.
If I may, Mrs. Thomas, I do have a couple of comments and a question. Obviously, reading down through the, they arrived on May 19th. It was definitely overwhelming. All of those plans in place, not knowing whether these are the guidelines, obviously. We don't have that information yet, whether that is what will be carried into the fall. And knowing that the number of our students that do participate in summer programming is definitely difficult. And like you mentioned with the buses, the number of our students that rely on for transportation would make it really difficult, I would believe, to alternate seating and not have not just a morning, Amina, what was it when I was in school, first run, second run, like, we couldn't even do that. There was, there'd be no way. So I, I can see where it's going to be really difficult to offer any sort of in-person summer programming. And not that we're just, you know, taking a vote or anything on that tonight, but that's, that's my, you know, what I've noticed. And then my other, my question is on the CTE testing and the adult ed testing. Obviously, we want these students to complete their programming ASAP. Not only do we want them in the workforce, but we need, you know, that completion, not just because of their graduation coming up, but, you know, we want to see that they, we do everything that we can to, to allow for that to happen. So when we talked about the remote learning before, a couple of meetings ago, I've lost track now. And it was sort of just touched upon. How much further have we gotten into the planning on whether we can offer a site or a classroom or something for that to get completed?
Jen, that's, that's a good question. One of the things that I've talked about with Director Bowles, Director Sargent is, you know, when, when you're looking at the number of students for DTE certifications or the adult ed certification, there's one difference between that and having your Title I A students or your ESY program. You, you do have the capacity to do a one-on-one thing. So for example, if you take the CNA piece, we have an instructor at HCTC who is a certified registered nurse. You could certainly do a one-to-one piece where your staff member and your student are completely separated with all those social and physical distancing pieces in place and make that work. One of the reasons that I've asked Mrs. Bowles and Mrs. Sargent to look at it is, if ultimately, the decision is that we're not going to have in-person instruction for the summer, we need to be able to demonstrate that we've looked at every alternative. And if the only alternative for, say, for example, the CNA piece is that one-to-one piece, we need to make sure that we can put in place everything we can to ensure the safety of both the student and the staff number. So that, that's, that's one of the pieces that we're looking at for that.
Yeah, what I was envisioning was some sort of, you know, time slot. Have one student come in at 10 o'clock and then the next one doesn't come in till noon or whatever that might help.
And Jen, I, I appreciate the suggestion. And I know that that's what Mrs. Bowles and Mrs. Sargent are looking at for those types of options. So I'm, I'm just waiting to get that information back from the two of them. And, you know, again, for me, if, if we're going to have remote learning for all of our programs during the day for our ESY and our Title I students, I think it would be appropriate to do it at these other levels. However, we may not have the option, and we need to be very thoughtful in how we do it. And what you suggest is very helpful. Appreciate it.
So in the adult ed, how many are we looking at, like, in these, between adult ed and the students at the HCTC that need to take their final exams?
I'm going to let Mrs. Sargent, Mrs. Bowles into that, Jen.
Thank you.
Right now, we have six students that need one or two tests to pass, you know, to graduate. And the only way that you can demonstrate your ability to graduate is to take that test in person. We have some other assessments that they're figuring out how to do remotely, like the Accuplacing Test and our required CASIS test for formative assessment. But the only way to earn your high school diploma is through taking that test face-to-face. And I've been quite concerned about these students because that if we waited until the fall event, they would be losing the knowledge that they gain, you know what I mean? So I'm hoping that we can make something work. And we can do it one-on-one, or we could do it in a very small group with basically a one-to-one
Okay.
So for HCTC, all of my programs have certification exams to give except for early childhood.
Okay.
Certification body decided to allow for pre-test scores given in the fall to count. And 100% of our early childhood students pass their pre-tests with a passing score at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So they all don't need to be tested. But all of my other programs have a certification exam to give. A few of them you can do over technology. We would prefer not to because of reliability issues and technology issues that other CTE schools have had administering those at students' home. But that is absolutely an option. That's an option for media and for law enforcement. And it's an option for culinary arts. For culinary arts, their certification exam would be at an additional cost per student. The rest, however, so biomedical, CNA, CRMA, automotive and diesel do not have the option to test virtually. They have to be tested in person. What's hard about scheduling one-to-one is for CNA, you have to have a testing moderator and you have one date only. And that is the date and the assigned time and date that you can give that test. So when we apply to the state to even give the exam, we have a two-to-four week, two-to-four week lag time, and we have to apply for a specific date. So CNA is probably the most complicated. Our testing proctor for the other exams is Hope High, our guidance counselor, because instructors aren't allowed to proctor their exams. So I've given two different options for ideas we've had for administering these certification exams to Mr. Higgins for he and I to review and just did that. So we're working on that. But we have ideas and plans in place for how we could do it safely. But like Annie mentioned, the longer we wait, the more worried we are that kids won't be as successful because of the downtime between content, instruction, and taking the actual exam.
And so do you have those same restrictions for your automotive and diesel? How do you, you would have Mrs. High proctored those exams as well, but those can be done?
Those, we would do those, we would schedule a different day and time for each program to do their test. So that we'd have time to disinfect clean. We'd set everything up six feet apart. And we would have that 10 to 2 ratio. And we're lucky, we, you know, we have an RN on staff. We have Michelle. So we can have a nurse on site like the recommendations ask for. And we also have Joy, our clinical supervisor. And then Hope is also our counselor. So that's part of the required checklist. So we would have that covered as well. So we've spent a lot of time looking it over to make sure that whatever we decide, it's done in as safe a manner as possible for not just the students, but also for the staff.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to take over the summer programming headline there, but I was just curious and trying to get that straight in my head.
Those are good questions, Jen. Thank you.
I believe we might have a question, Mr. Marcosian?
Yes, we do. I've got a question submitted by Beth Altieri. She says, will there be curriculum guidelines if remote learning has to continue, such as amount of time spent in class or uniform, class in, she put in quotation marks, or uniform expectations for students?
And that's a great question, one that other parents may also have. I think I would defer the answer to that to Mrs. Carmen Ramos, who oversees one of the summer programs, and also to Mrs. McCackery Murphy, who oversees the other one. And whichever order you ladies would like to go, I will run it over to you.
Well, one of the questions I had was whether that question was about summer learning or continued into the fall. That's a summer, did it?
Rachel, I, I believe it was about in the fall.
Okay, so if it's in the fall, certainly we would coordinate that with principals. But as far as the general education expectations for curriculum, there will be time expectations. We would discuss that among grade levels and make school-wide decisions about that so that there would be clear expectations. We do know that this past piece of remote learning was launched in crisis mode. And that we would be spending our days after students are finished on June 5th through the 18th, planning, you know, carefully how those pieces would be put in place. We have a little more time to think about it. I just was on a meeting with a group of staff and discussed the fact that in those days, given that we don't know how, you know, the numbers will go, the CDC's recommendations, et cetera. You know, there's so many unknowns that perhaps during those days, teachers will plan to put out some ideas for different scenarios. So, you know, we're learning things very quickly. We can't know them ahead of time. We're all finding out. There's so many I don't knows that we have to adapt and that, that we would talk about, you know, if we were remote learning in the, in, for a certain period of time, if we were, you know, coming back in a certain period of time and have teachers play out those scenarios as a group. Certainly, those days will be planning how the curriculum would be rolled out. We'll not be doing new programming, as I had said in another meeting. We are committed to our Go Math curriculum, our STEM Scopes curriculum, the teacher toolboxes that we use for other pieces. So they will be programs that teachers are familiar with. We will have additional professional development to support teachers in remote teaching of those programs. But in, but yes, the coordination will be there for the curriculum to be planned, to be mindful, and to be expressed transparently to parents so that they have a better sense of what is expected. You know, we were, we were all along with the rest of the nation, you know, flying this plane and building it. And I think I do wanted to say that the teachers, the board, the administration, I think have really taken the task on and done an amazing job. But it has been difficult as, as we're all learning. And I'm a parent as well of two kids. And I've been getting directions from our school district and, you know, it's, it's tough to do on a day-to-day basis. But we are knowing ahead of time that there are possible options of how this could roll out. And we plan to put in place discussions so that all those options can be considered as much as possible and that you will be communicated, you know, be communicated with about what those will be.
I think I would just add to what Rachel was saying. Ditto, whatever curriculum we really have in place is something that in special education, we're going to modify to meet the individual needs of the students where they are at that time. And at the end of the school year, we're spending a significant amount of time really looking at where the students ended in March, what they've accomplished at this point in time, and what kind of regression there may be, and in some cases, what kind of progress. I've had some really nice success stories about kids really doing well at home, which I know is not what we typically hear. But we're going to be calculating what more do we need to do to meet their needs as well. So again, it's, it's all individualized. It's all paced with the student and what they need at that time. So whatever the curriculum turns out being, we will be working with that. And in special education, we're really working with individual goals as developed by an IEP team. And that is what we would continue to do. For 504s, we would absolutely look at any kind of accommodations that might need any kind of changing. That is, that is a regular education thing, really. 504, it's part of the American of Disabilities Act and allows accommodations for students in the classroom to level the playing field with their peers. So again, we would be looking at accommodating the needs of students based on whatever curriculum it is we may or may not change. As far as what Rachel was saying about the remote learning, absolutely, we're learning on the ground as we go. And it is our goal to actually be able to bring a higher standard of remote learning, if that is what we do, to us, to our students in the fall and to our families as well. And I really encourage anybody who has any questions or concerns right now or in the future, please, 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 don't feel like your question is unanswered. Contact me personally and I will address them. I've only had a couple concerns come up, and those have been things where I have reached out. So I really encourage you, anyone out there with concerns, contact me. I'd really like to speak with you. Thanks.
And I would add that we have a curriculum instruction and assessment team that has representatives at all the grade span levels, including administrators. And we have gotten together to talk about surveying our teachers and getting a sense of what has gone well for them, what has been challenging, and what we can continue to do to support them. So we are working on that so that we get a good response from everyone, so that we know how to work through the summer to be as supportive as possible. And as Carol Ann said, the other piece not to worry about is that we're being very mindful that students are going to be in very different places than we'd often would anticipate. They tend to be in, you know, larger groups moving forward. And we do know that people have had exceptionally different experiences with this remote learning. It's been very difficult for many families to even access it. Other people, you know, parents have been working, parents have been taking care of kids. We know that it is varying widely. And so a good chunk of the time that we'll be spending after the students are finished and the teachers are staying on will be to talking about the students individually and, and planning for them what they need. So one of the biggest requests that I've heard from teachers is please give us time to talk to the teachers who will have these students so that we can share with them what we know about them, what their progress has been, what their, you know, ability has been to access curriculum so that we can, so we can move them along on a personal basis. And that's been very important to teachers because they are so, so devoted to their students that, that they are wishing that they could see them and give them a send-off in person and be able to assure them that they are going to have personal care coming in next year.
Thank you, ladies. Mrs. Thomas, can I just add to that a little bit?
Sure.
I, I appreciate the answers that Carol and Rachel gave. I, I actually had interpreted Mrs. Altieri's question as, as a summer question, but I think the answers that we give were appropriate. But it kind of does lead me into a piece with regard to the summer. One of the consensus beliefs that our leadership team came to was the guidance that we're seeing for the summer. Again, we don't know what it's going to look like in the fall. I don't expect that we're going to see it the first couple of weeks of June, which we were hoping for. But we're looking at that as kind of a litmus test. Are those the types of things that we're going to be asked to have in place in the fall? We're thinking that there are going to be some similarities. So the fact that at this point in time, we have a remote learning program, which both the ladies that just spoke have said, we're, we're at the point where we're ready to put that into motion for the summer. And again, both those ladies are the resources to call if there are concerns or questions specifically. But to get that into place, because we know that we can serve our students and to focus our other energies on what is the fall going to look like? Because I, I think it's very important. Rachel made the point. This was an emergency, and this was a crisis that happened and came upon all of us very quickly in March. Next fall is more of a planned emergency. So we can take the lessons that we have all learned over the course of the last three months, implement them over the summer, prepare all of the other requirements that we have so that hopefully, and again, I stress hopefully, when we come back in the fall, we're looking at having people back in our buildings rather than a remote basis.
Mr. Marcosian?
Yes, we've got one more. It's actually a follow-up comment by Beth Altieri, addressed to Rachel for her response. She says, Beth says, thank you, Rachel. That was my hope, was that things are being thought about in advance, so we don't have crisis mode in the fall if this continues. Our teachers and staff are spectacular. Like to thank you, Zaltieri, for that comment. Like to thank you, Zaltieri, for that comment.
Any further comments?
Yes. I just hope that the public understands that this plan that's had to come together to keep the school sanitized, it's massive, absolutely huge. So, and, and it comes with an expense that we are very suddenly having to take on and it's would, it's got a high possibility as Superintendent Higgins was, was saying that, you know, this is a litmus test for the fall. We might have to do this in the fall, you know? And it's not just obviously our school, it's the whole country. And I, I thank you guys for saying, you know, we're going to be looking at each student and at where they're at. And we understand it's going to be, you know, that people are going to be coming from different places. You know, this, because this is of such a vastly different home environment for so many people and what gets happened at, what gets done at home. And maybe what we should be kind of thinking is let's all have the hope that for, well, it'd be great if this wasn't here in the fall, but let's have maybe that thing, be thinking of next summer. Maybe what we could be thinking of is something of a more intense summer school plan to do a bigger catch-up next summer when let's really hope this is all gone by then. And maybe these things can be accomplished, um, kind of at a as an overall catch-up for the year of, of having to deal with this COVID. Because this, you know, a lot of these people, like transportation, you know, there's, there's a lot to get a lot, you know, X amount of people on a bus delivered to school and back safely. You know, it, it's, and, and what has been put in place, the suggestions are magnificent. There's, there's nothing to pick apart there. There, there, it's a good, it's a good planning. It's thoughtful planning. It's thorough planning. Um, whether we can really get it all out there is going to be, it's going to be challenging. And, and as I said, we might, we might need to be thinking a year from now. It might be, you know, be the better long-term plan. Just an idea, but very good plan overall, really. And I'm very impressed with the very minute details that have been covered.
I think along with that, thank you, Abby. I think along with that, one of the other things that's been kind of a theme going through the past several weeks is, you know, having remote learning for the summer, planning for the fall, but also taking a look at not just the lessons that we've learned for over the spring that we'll continue to learn over the summer for implementation in the fall, but also potentially an opportunity. Um, you know, education, um, there may be opportunities that come out of all of this, whether it's next fall, next winter, or as Abby says, next summer, where some of the things that we've learned and some of the things that have been implemented can become part of our repertoire for some of our students to enhance learning. Um, so there, there may be an opportunity in this as well. So, and again, I know there are a couple of other board members. I don't know if any of you had anything else you wanted to share on this piece before I kind of give you my thought process of where I think we need to be for the summer. I, I, I think from, from my perspective, with all the feedback that we've received, um, not just from our staff. And again, I, I agree. I think our staff did a great job looking at all this information. Um, and I know that most of Hancock County, if not all of it, is going to opt to do the same thing. I think our best, uh, best position at this point in time is to plan for a continuation of the remote learning over the summer for 1A and E S Y. Um, work with Director Sargent and Bowles to do what we can on a remote basis and find a way to complete those programs in a safe basis and really focus on planning for what our fall is going to look like, our fall and beyond.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I've had nothing else come in.
Thank you.
And again, Mrs. Thomas, I'd also like to thank, thank the board for listening and weighing in tonight on this. You know, it's, it's a lot of information. I'm sure we're going to be doing this again over the summer when, when we get some documentation from the Department of Ed. Uh, but also again, thank you to our staff for really spending a lot of time going through this. Um, they can tell you that Friday morning was a long morning, um, going through all of this, but they really do a good job. And as you know, they've got the best interest of kids, um, right at the forefront. So I, I appreciate their effort on this.
I would like to adjourn our board workshop. And I, I'd like to call to order our regular special school board meeting. And so it's 7:04 and I'd like to have you join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
I have no adjustments, Mrs. Thomas.
Thank you. Item D, the approval of the minutes. And I believe those were from, um, May 12th.
Yes, that's correct.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 12th meeting.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion. Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Here.
Yes.
The roll call, we're not doing roll call.
I forgot the roll call at the beginning. Abby Miller?
Here, here.
Are you for, are you for the minutes?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosian?
Yes.
And I'm for them also, so that's 5:0. Okay, communications and correspondence.
I have none, Mrs. Thomas.
Public participation, uh, public comments can be made through question and answers through Zoom or by sending an email to Mr. Marcosian at P Marcosian at elsewithschools.org. And item G is the appointment of administrative staff for Elswood Elementary Middle School.
Uh, Mrs. Thomas, I'd like to address the board on that, but would also ask our personnel committee members to weigh in when I'm finished if they would like. Um, just a little bit about the process. First of all, thank you very much to the screening selection advisory committee members. Uh, involved in that process were Mr. Marcosian, um, and Mr. Hudson on the board and the personnel committee. Uh, we had two teachers who also served on that committee. Jan Newitt is a kindergarten teacher at EES. Michelle Brown, who teaches grade four at EES. Um, Erica Gabinelli, who is the principal at EMS. And Kathy Lewis, who is our current and outgoing principal at EES. And I also served as well. The committee received nine applications. And after initial review and screening of those applications, the committee selected three candidates for interviews. And we were very pleased. We had very high quality of candidates in all three, and we interviewed those three candidates and conducted two rounds of interview. And the committee has come to a unanimous consensus for presentation to the board for a nomination. Uh, but I do appreciate the work of committee members throughout this process. It was very thorough and very thoughtful. So following a very thorough and thoughtful process, uh, the screening selection advisory committee's unanimous consensus selection for the principal position at EES, grade K through four, is April Clifford. In addition to having strong interviews, uh, April impressed the committee with her experiences in leadership, her depth and breadth of knowledge of the curriculum instructional and assessment systems in our school and instructional technology, not only at the elementary level, but system one. They were also very impressed with her experience working positively, collaboratively and successfully, not only with her team and the instructional technology department, but also with our teachers and students across the district in support of the district's mission and vision. Through her role as the district's director of instructional technology, April has experience and background in all aspects of our schools and systems operations that will serve her well in her new role. Um, April is a longtime employee of the school department. Has 20 years educational leadership positions. And she's actively involved in and committed to our community as evidenced by her work in various other um, activities in the community. Her work in both environments has always been in the best interest of children. Through her successful work in and outside of school, she's earned the respect of students, staff, parents and community members, and has exhibited appropriate leadership characteristics in practice. Uh, on behalf of the committee, uh, the committee is pleased to recommend her to the board and so am I as the next principal of EES. And I would welcome Mr. Marcosian or Mr. Hudson, who are board members who served on that committee.
I would be happy to weigh in. I, I just want to say what an honor it was for me to serve on the screening committee with, especially with the staff who work in, uh, at EMS. Um, the two principals in that building and two elementary school teachers. Erica Gabinelli, Kathy Lewis are the principals. And then, um, we had Michelle Brown and Jen Newitt, uh, two elementary school teachers. I was really impressed by the perspective, their knowledge and the experience that they brought to all the discussions we had. And I was a bit in awe of them. So I felt really fortunate to be able to sit around the table with them as well as Mr. Higgins and, um, Mr. Hudson. And I really feel like we, um, we had some great applicants, uh, but I feel like we, we picked the one that's right for our school and I'm very confident in the decision we made.
Everything Paul said and it's, um, makes the process a lot easier when we have the, the panel of experts to ask the specific questions when we're not sure about things, about a different qualification or what might work better, um, in the school. So, uh, it makes, it makes the work a lot easier on these committees. So I, I appreciate, uh, the support uh, from the other members of that committee and, um, it's fantastic. Excellent. Thank you.
So Mrs. Thomas, we would certainly would, uh, I think this is your job, but we would entertain a motion.
Mm-hmm, I'm waiting.
Make a motion that we officially vote in Ms. April Clifford as our new elementary school principal.
Um, may, may I add an amendment to that, Mrs. Miller?
Of course.
Yep. Um, approve the appointment of April Clifford as EES principal for the 2021 year, as you said, under a two-year administrative contract.
Ex under.
Is that okay? Is that okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
I'll second that. Discussion? He, hearing none. Roll call. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Absolutely.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 5:0.
Congratulations, April.
Congratulations, April.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, April.
April, can you start tomorrow?
It's after you fix the technology.
And again, just, just for the members of the public, the, uh, the appointment becomes effective, uh, officially July 1, uh, but knowing April, she's, uh, already going to be starting work on her new position, even though she's already got a, a lot going on. But congratulations, April.
Thank you very much.
And can I just comment real quick to, um, how how happy I am that you're going to be in this position, but the shoes that we will need to fill in that IT department. I, our department is amazing, but you've been incredible, especially during this whole time when everybody's got fires everywhere and we don't know how to put them out and log onto meetings. And it's been amazing. So.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I love that. I, you're going to bring that aspect to this, you know, position too. All, it's, it's a very exciting time for our kids to have you coming in, in this role.
Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to it. I, I, it's an honor to serve the Elswood community and be a part of the Elswood school system.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Jen Alexander?
Yes.
Abby Miller?
Yes.
Rob Hudson?
Yes.
Paul Marcosian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. 5:0. 7:15.
Congratulations, April.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, April.
Hooray.
Very happy.
Thank you.
So happy to have you on board.
Yay. Thank you.